Call the meetings of order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty seventeen. General District Courtroom, Edward R. Shields, Courthouse, Division eleven, Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, Ms. Lemon.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Hagman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
I'm here.
Mr. Bartstown?
Present.
Mr. Warren?
Here. Glad that you would. I'll try to hold it silent. It's with his voice. Thank you. You stand to the right.
What's on the Youth Commission camera?
I got him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the items to be added, gentlemen, I'll tell you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add two items to the agenda. One is, I'd like to add item under new business five F, set public hearing to add a courthouse fee, renovation fee. And secondly, it would be five H, add a vote on the letter of support for the regional transit project.
I'd like to add one also, introduction of youth commission is requested by this.
We take them all at one time, Mr. Hunter. Yes, if you list them, then you can just do a bunch to amend, to approve.
I'll tell you what, I withdraw. You just add that up.
As item I, also to add introduction of youth commission.
Second. Any discussion on adding the items to the agenda? Saying on the table, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda with the handed items.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Davis in discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we'll move the hearing of citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate your speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard.
The hearing of citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in the order you've signed up. First on the list is Dan Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon or good evenings, some of it's one of those. My name is Dan Hayes and I live in the Chatham Blair's district, and that has nothing to do with why I'm here today, but it is where I'm from. My employer is Avery University and I'm here representing them today. What I'd like to tell you is that four score and seven minutes ago, I was sitting in my office pondering the things that are great about our community. A county conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that we live in a business savvy and people friendly community. We are a people that enjoy a good time and good food and good friends and maybe an occasional friendly beverage. All of these things can be found in one weekend and one place. Avery University Homecoming will be October twentieth through twenty-second. I'm here today to invite you and everyone that can hear my voice to the two biggest events of the weekend. On Friday night, we host the Homecoming Hometown Party. We want the community to come and join us for a great meal, a diverse set of beverages, and the fun dancing time hosted by an internationally traveled DJ that also happens to be an alumnus of Avery. Saturday, October twenty-first, on our north campus located at seven oh seven Mount Cross Road, will be the tailgate party leading up to our big Homecoming game against another team who I shall not advertise for by mentioning their name, but I will assure you that we hope to pummel them and a lead, but in a gentlemanly and sportsmanlike way, of course. All of these things can be learned and reserved at www.avery.edu/homecoming. But for you, our community letters, it's you leaders, this says leaders on it, but I said letters. But for you, our community leaders, I have a stack of propaganda and direct invitations and fine monogrammed ink writing implements. Is it okay if I give this?
Please, please do.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thanks, sir.
It's like Christmas.
Absolutely. Someone's gotta have it. You're tough to get to because of all these wires.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Come and join us. There you go. Absolutely. Very good. Very good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next on the list is Lori, I think it's Allen.
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Lori Allen. I'm from Gretna, and thank you all for letting me come up here. I wanted to convey my voice and concerns about some things that I've witnessed with the new Pittsburgh Pet Center. I was an employee there as a veterinary assistant. I was recommended by Dr. Paul Warren to work there. Working there, I'm gonna read off the list because I only have three minutes, but I think there's things that you should be concerned about as a board because this represents our county. This represents the animal care that we're supposed to be trying to implement, and I know McKenna Yarborough speaks a good speech, but all is not what it is. Being there, I witnessed that none of the staff there was trained properly. Many OSHA violations are being done. I can give you a list of them, I can leave you a copy. We weren't prepared to take on what we did. We didn't have the supplies we needed for medical feed, computer setup, protocols. All animal areas weren't being cleaned or sanitized properly. They say they use this rescue, which is supposed to be the best thing that hit the market. If you read the litter tray on rescue, it also says that you should be using other products that will effectively, like ammonium bleach to address coxidia, ringworm, parvovirus, and distemper. Bleach is really the only thing that cleans distemper. There have been three positive cases so far in the shelter. There's another one in there, it's shut down. I was told being a vet tech by our animal control officer Justin that why are we not shutting this place down? Because we're not only affecting the public, but we're also putting the animals at risk in the shelter along with public safety with the distemper. It's a no contagion. The animals were moved about by Jill Mullin and McKenna Yarborough under, oh, I should say against the advice of our contracted veterinarian, which was Chatham Animal Clinic. Against my advice, against Mark Narren's advice, who was the shelter manager. He was let go for voicing his concerns. I was let go two weeks later. Jennifer Foley was let go three weeks later for voicing her concerns. We were wrongfully terminated because we were speaking up about what needed to be done to address the contagions in the center. I guess my three minutes are up.
You gotta miss.
Okay, so every time I was, being a vet assistant, I was the only medical person there. So I was told by Jill and McKenna that I was supposed to go according to our contracted vets' protocols. When I did that, I was ostracized for doing it, and it created a hostile environment for me because it put me in a position where do I listen to the vet, do I listen to you? Because they're not veterinarians. They were moving contagious animals all over the place instead of isolating them where they shouldn't have been isolated, and now there's like this rampant disease issue going on there, adopting animals out to people.
You gotta wrap it up.
Okay. I just think you guys need to be aware. OSHA regulations are being not lawful.
Thank you. Thank you. Wayne Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. As you all already know, I live in Mr. Warren's district. I came to show you a picture of my great-great-grandfather who lived in what is now the Stanley River District of Pennsylvania County. He fought and died in the Confederate Army not to preserve slavery. He never owned any slaves. He fought for states' rights and to repel an invasion from the north. That statue out in front of the Pennsylvania County Courthouse was placed here in his memory and in the memory of other Pennsylvania County residents who died in that war. I am also here to implore you to leave that statue where it is. Do not cave into the liberal left who may want to remove the statue. Do not remove that Confederate statue and do not allow it to be removed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Next on the list as citizens is Henry Smith.
Good evening to the board. My name is Henry Smith, Gretna County District. I am chairman of trustees and trade to the Elbow Missionary Baptist Church and Reverend Jennings. I am one of several persons here to speak on behalf of the members of our church this evening. We are here concerning item ten on your agenda, the old Northside High School's property. Several officers of the church have met with Mr. Snidmore and Mr. Harper early in July prior to your July opening to respect our big desire to obtain this property. We left the meeting with a good feeling that the county would likely support us in acquiring the property. We understood that a public notice would be required after our to release of the property, but since the county had no plans for the property, it would not be a problem. To our surprise, and I must say this forward, that in your July meeting, you decided to put up for public auction on our national website the property. Now we were faced with having to bid against anyone from anywhere in the country for a property that is sitting in one street block from our current church. Fortunately, as it turned out, Elba wasn't the highest bidder. Based on my conversation with Mr. Connor Gibson, who was the county contact for the auction, but at the same time, she also informed me that the county did not have to accept the high bid because of a reserve fraction fifty thousand offered on the property, which was not met with a bid. In our meeting, mentioned earlier, with the county administrator and his assistant, we were led to believe that the county had no desire to make money off the property, especially since the property was lying unthought and that our use of the property would be in benefit of the community in large, as we explained in our June thirty schedule to board. I was also informed in recent conversations with Gretna Town officials that the county did deed to the Riverview Company, the old Gretna Middle School, which was the former Northside High School, at no cost. Also that one of the tracts of land in question was offered to the area feedback at no cost. I also understand that there were conditions placed on those organizations that had to be met before they could receive a clear deed. General, we do not expect to be given this property. This was mentioned just to show this is what the county has in the past. It's time to actually consider it, the organization's plan used for county property will improve, enhance the quality and the way of life for the citizens of that area. And this is exactly what Elba desires to do with its property in question. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next is Diane Jennings.
Good evening, Gordon. My name is Diane Jennings. I am from the Banister District. I'm a life member of the community in which we're before you tonight. As you know, the layout of the land is located pretty much in the middle of the community on a hill, and it can be seen from every angle. Not only does it stand as a historical site, it is a reflection of how the community is maintained. There are many senior citizens and retirees, and their aspirations are often reflected in the condition of the community. This site can be an eyesore, and it has been an eyesore in the community because of its poor maintenance. We are here tonight because of community and church interest in ownership in all fairness and obtaining in all fairness the property in question for a better and more appealing site as well as a greater place for future worship. All we're asking from the board tonight is rationality. We're proud of our community and we want to do bigger and better things. Not only is it a reflection of Gretna, but it's also a reflection of Pennsylvania County. Please consider this petition that a greater legacy will be left for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Next to speak is Ms. Maxine Diggs.
Good evening, Mr. Bob Warren, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and Pennsylvania County Supervisors. My name is Maxine Diggs and I live in the Banister District. I'm speaking as a representative for those here tonight to request your earnest sincere fare and thought for consideration to be given to the sale of the land located in Gretna that was once, was the place most, if not all of us here tonight, attended football games, physical education classes, and other social events. Championships make history. Great athletes such as Solis Musgrove even advanced to the pro circuit and the football arena. There's a great heritage history and nostalgia that exists when we think of this place. In addition, there's history and heritage that exists between the land in question and the Elba Missionary Baptist Church. During the period between the late nineteen fifties and during the nineteen sixties, many of the students attended classes in the Elba Missionary Baptist Church due to an overcrowded standing building. I was one of those students who attended second and fifth grade at the Elba Missionary Baptist Church. The school closed in nineteen sixty-nine. I was a part of the last graduating class of Northside High School. This is a part of our history. We speak fondly of the teachers that taught there. It is a part of my former alma mater. This land is where all African-Americans attended school if you lived in the northern part of the county. I can recall tales of those who even caught the Greyhound bus to get to school because there was no transportation. When we first inquired about the land fifteen years ago, it was stated that you had no plans for the area. Since that time, nothing has been done to demonstrate you have set future goals for development. Therefore, we have followed the procedures and policies you put in place and deemed necessary. We entered the highest bid. Our acquisition of the land and the objectives we have for the land will improve the aesthetics of the area and invite more productive and resourceful people into the area and bring revenue into the area for the citizens of Gretna. This in return will improve the economic development of the area. Acquiring this land to complete our goals will also improve a depressed area in Pennsylvania County. Deliver a sentimental value, as I stated previously. Many football games were won on that field. It is now time to take a game in a new direction, the direction the winning souls for price. Our president, in addressing the United Nations this afternoon, spoke of a country...
Ms. Diggs, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, that has a government of the people, for the people, and by the people. Our local government governs on these same premises. It is a government of representatives for the people. We, the people of the county, ask that you stand by the original procedure for obtaining the land.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. Next is Willie Roth.
Good evening. My name is Willie Roth. I'm from the Banister District, and I'm also a member of the Elba Missionary Baptist Church and my neighbors right in the neighborhood. And I just want y'all to know how wonderful it would be for not to come out of my front door or sit in my van and look out from the old Northside High School, but I could see a new church. The land is gonna be desolate, and I've been there for about ten years now, and there's nothing been there, and how wonderful it would be for us to build a new church there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Ms. Gracie Mays and Sheriff Department Employees, I guess, you got on the list here.
All right, I'm Gracie Mays, and I live in the Chatham Blair's district, and this is Deputy Chris Brown, who lives in the Chatham Blair's district. I might have to do this all over again, because last time we were here, we did not have Mr. Scares, we did not have Mr. Davis, and we did not have Mr. Warren. Okay, for years now, we have been holding a charity softball game between Dambler Police Department, Dambler Sheriff's Office, and the Pennsylvania County Sheriff's Office and the Pennsylvania County Sheriff's Office. The money goes to charity, which is a dare for the county and Boys and Girls Club for the city of Dambler. But the biggest thing that everybody wants is this little thing right here, the almighty trophy. What was it, three years ago that y'all lost the soul and the sheriff was really upset?
A little bit.
Oh, and speaking of sheriff, we would have been here tonight, but he probably passed away, and we also were saddened over that, and we did miss him very much. And so they had to come back, fort strong, to use this trophy now. This is the two thousand seventeen trophy. In two thousand and sixteen, there was not enough players for the city or the county because they just not have enough employees to come out on Saturday and play. But again, this year, the county won. Normally, they play the best two out of three, but they won the best two out of three, and everybody said, no, we're not gonna play three, you know, just for the fun of it. So everybody went home. So I'm here tonight to present the Board of Supervisors and Chris Brown and the Sheriff's Office the trophy for two thousand and seventeen. I need your help a little bit. I need you to take back to the sheriff a check for one hundred dollars for the Boys and Girls Club.
I can handle it.
I need you to, well, I need you the dare officer, so there's your check for one hundred dollars.
Which goes into my account.
Which goes into your account.
To help our students.
Right. We also had another thing to go on where whoever hits the most home runs would also get a hundred dollars. They did it. So there's another hundred dollars for the most home runs.
Thank you very much, Diane. We appreciate all your help.
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, Board, I appreciate y'all's attention tonight to this matter. Obviously, it's an ongoing thing. We've played eleven years. The county has won nine, excuse me, but we have won nine years out of the eleven. This year, we had a unique situation where the first game was twelve to nine and the second game was twelve to nine. We've never matched scores, so I was kinda paranoid about that, but we did not play a third game just simply because our guys were tired and it was hot.
Yeah. We also had an Easter egg hunt.
We had an Easter egg hunt, by the way. Yes, we did. I forgot about that, and the chocolate was melting, so we had to hurry up. So, but we tried to do something for the community that day as well, not only getting us, as well as the Dambler Sheriff's Office and the Dambler Police Department, out on the field, out of the professional, I guess, areas of our jobs where we could just have fun, carry on with each other, a good, clean sportsmanship game of fun with baseball, softball, where our families could come out and kinda intermingle with each other. We invited community folks as well, and of course, you can see the results. We did luckily win the game, and we also cranked out more home runs than Dambler did, so that's always a bragging right, I guess, of sorts. But we did have an Easter egg hunt for our youth in the community, for the city and the county. The Dambler Braves agreed to allow Bloopers to come out and be part of the festivities as well.
He was trying to eat the eggs.
He tried to eat my granddaughter, I know that, so we need to feed Bloopers better, I would assume, but he was there in his Hawaiian flowery shirt, and he had a very good time with the kids as well. We had numerous kids show up. We did have a young lady that also donated her time and her efforts for the concession stands as well, and we had a good, clean, fun game, beautiful, sunshiny day. We all got tanned and decided to go home. But on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, as well as all of our team who couldn't be here with us tonight due to, I'm sure, prior obligations, but we do appreciate all the support that you have given us over the years to help us put the game on, to advertise, get sponsorships, and the whole nine yards. I know it's a lot of work that goes into it, and we do appreciate it very much. I know it's a lot of behind the scenes work, but I do appreciate everything that you do for us and for the program. Obviously, these funds can be used for our dare program here in the county to further educate our students about the misuse of drugs and alcohol in our county and violence and gangs and continue the dare program strong like it's been going for quite a few years. And of course, the Boys and Girls Club check will go to the sheriff, and that'll go to the Dambler group, so Sheriff Mondule and Chief Broadfoot will be recipients of that, and they can help those students there in the city as well. Even though they didn't win the game, we'll still help them out a little bit.
Yeah.
So it's all for the kids, that's what it's about.
Now, when they were leaving, Sheriff, Chief Broadfoot was there, and the Dambler was leaving.
Correct.
And then he left, and then they were still leaving. Sheriff Mondule left, and then once he left, then they started to start a war.
They lost their secret weapons.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was. So, but thank you again, Chairman, Board, thank y'all very much.
Thank you all very much.
What we do is we get a picture of you all down here with him.
We can do that.
Or we go up there and get a picture.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can do that. We'd be glad to have to do that. We wanna thank you all before we come down, though, the Sheriff's Department, for all you do every day, not just this project. We wanna thank you as a board, and Ms. Mays, thank you for your efforts. Certainly charities are benefiting from this as the interaction is good for the whole region. So, gentlemen, if you'll draw me down front so we can take a picture.
Let me get a sack of raisins, I'll work columns.
Can't forget you. All right, thank you.
that are here tonight for an introduction that are part of the Pennsylvania County
Okay.
Youth Commission members, and if the board would indulge us and agree that we could insert them right now just for their introduction, it'll take maybe a minute, and then they can get home to get that homework done and do all of that if you all don't have a problem with it. Everybody okay with it?
Yeah. I wouldn't want to interfere with anybody's homework.
We just hope you... so that's always a bragging right, I guess, of sorts. But we did have an Easter egg hunt for our youth in the community, for the city and the county. The Dambler Braves agreed to allow Blooper to come out and be part of the festivities as well.
He was trying to eat the eggs.
He tried to eat my granddaughter, I know that. So we need to feed Blooper better, I would assume. But he was there in his Hawaiian flowery shirt, and he had a very good time with the kids as well. We had numerous kids show up. We did have a young lady that also donated her time and her efforts for the concession stands as well. And we had a good, clean, fun game, beautiful, sunshiny day. We all got tanned and decided to go home. But on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, as well as all of our team, who couldn't be here with us tonight, due to, I'm sure, prior obligations, but we do appreciate all the support that you have given us over the years to help us put the game on, to advertise, get sponsorships, and the whole nine yards. I know it's a lot of work that goes into it, and we do appreciate it very much. I know it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but I do appreciate everything that you do for us and for the program. Obviously, these funds can be used for our dare program here in the county to further educate our students about the misuse of drugs and alcohol in our county, and violence and gangs, and continue the dare program strong like it's been going for quite a few years. And of course, the Boys and Girls Club check will go to the sheriff, and that'll go to the Dambler group, so Sheriff Mondule and Chief Broadfoot will be recipients of that, and they can help those students there in the city as well. Even though they didn't win the game, we'll still help them out a little bit.
Yeah.
So it's all for the kids, that's what it's about.
Now, when they were leaving, Sheriff, Chief Broadfoot was there, and the Dambler was leaving.
Correct.
And then he left, and then they were still leaving, Sheriff Mondule left, and then once he left, then they started to start a war.
They lost their secret weapons.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was. So, but thank you again, Chairman, Board, thank y'all very much.
Thank you all very much.
What we do is we get a picture of you all down here with him.
We can do that.
Or we go up there and get a picture.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can do that. We'd be glad to have to do that. We want to thank you all before we come down, though, the Sheriff's Department, for all you do every day, not just this project. We want to thank you as a board, and Ms. Mays, thank you for your efforts. Certainly charities are benefiting from this, as the interaction is good for the whole region. So, gentlemen, if you'll draw me down front, so we can take a picture. that are here tonight for an introduction, that are part of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission members, and if the Board would indulge us and agree that we could insert them right now, just for their introduction, it'll take maybe a minute, and then they can get home to get that homework done and do all of that, if you all don't have a problem with it. Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to interfere with anybody's homework.
We just hope you did some.
I didn't.
Mr. Corey Stevens with Parks and Recs is going to come forward and give introductions of these folks. Thank you all, citizens, for indulging us.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, members of the Board. As Chairman of the Advisory for the Youth Commission, I would like to introduce our new 2017, 2018 Youth Commission members. These young members will be acting as a voice to you all, and also as a voice for their schools that they represent in their community. All right, first, I would like to introduce Savannah Reed. Savannah is a ninth grader, she goes to Tostal High School. Kendall Moore. Kendall Moore is also a ninth grader from Tostal High School. Kelsey Poole. Kelsey is a senior at Tostal High School. And Dylan Sparks. Dylan is also a senior at Chatham High School. And I also have three more members that couldn't be here tonight because prior engagements. Connor Weaver, he's a senior at Tostal High School. Lauren Jones, senior from Gretna High School. And Joshua Neal, he's a freshman from Chatham, or excuse me, he's from Tostal High School as well. So ladies and gentlemen, the 2017, 2018 Youth Commission members.
Our future leaders, future leaders, thank you, Mr. Stevens, very much. We look forward to hearing from you all throughout the year.
Can I take a brief picture?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll turn around. You guys are smiling back.
Will it help?
They probably look better without us. Thank you very much. I think the rest of us better go to work, looks like Mr. Barber's got all the representation on Tostal High School.
I didn't want to say nothing, Mr. Davis, but...
Okay, back to business. Michelle Bucy. Bucy? Bucy, thank you very much.
Hi, gentlemen, my name is Michelle Bucy. You probably recognize me, I'm a former member of the Pennsylvania County employee for the county under the animal shelter. I was also previously employed under Lynchburg. I'm here to talk about the Pennsylvania Pet Center tonight. As you can previously heard from a fellow coworker, there are many issues going on with the shelter, such as cleaning, there's cross-contamination going on, such as taking a squeegee from one place into another part, and that, thus, people and those things are becoming fomites, which are basically, it's a thing, or a person carrying bacteria, viruses, fungus, whatever it may be. And they also, there are things that they have done, such as leaving out dirty linen in the kennels, and when they are cleaning, they are bringing in clean linen and leaving it on the floor to be exposed to bacteria and such. Also as well, the cleaning tools are not being cleaned properly in between uses. There is a lack of safety, such as safety equipment, catch poles, nets, and biting proof gloves, to help prevent exposure to rabies and other things. Protocols are also in question, there are things that the state veterinarian wants, regardless what Lynchburg wants, we have to do what the state veterinarian wants. They have been leaving bags of food on the floor when they are supposed to be either on a pallet or in a container. They have had open barrels of food with no lid on it, that is being exposed to animals or insects getting in the container. Training, as you already know, is another thing that's in question. They could have been properly trained if they had taken some sheltering classes, which are provided by VACA, the Virginia Animal Control Association, and the State Vets Office. Corrections were made to them. I have previous experience as a kennel attendant, I am also a member of VACA, NACA, and VOS, and none of them had heeded what I said, or any of what the vets had told them. And in this addition, sir, these things are putting animals and the staff at risk in safety and in health. In addition, Lynchburg did not hold up their end of the bargain by not guaranteeing Mark Nairn's position as the shelter manager when they fired him. Plus, when they started to bring in staff from outside of the county to work in it.
Need to wrap it up.
And just to wrap it up, sir, I do implore you, Board of Supervisor members, to take back the shelter from Lynchburg for the sake of the animals and the county citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mike Neal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, try to get this as quick as I can. My name is Mike Neal, I'm fire chief for Ringo Fire and Rescue, been doing fire and rescue 47 years, I'm with the Pennsylvania County Fire Association also. Just a couple of quick points I want to bring up tonight concerning the association. Back in 2015, county put a group together to do a study to improve fire and rescue in its county, which was probably greatly needed. We got that put in Clarence Monday, our latest county manager before he left, Mr. Smitherson, put a committee together, I was on that committee, we made some recommendations to try to better our service in our county, and in moving forward, you've got to do that to survive. We made a lot of recommendations, we're looking at hiring a public safety director, we worked on a backup system, and we're looking to better our service in the county. Keep in mind, it's 21 fire, 12 rescue in Pennsylvania County, which is the largest county in the state of Virginia. So a couple of things, and going forward, I want to make sure that Fire and Rescue Association is being recognized through the ordinance with our new coordinator, and in our recommendation, goal one says, "The Board of Supervisors shall officially recognize Pennsylvania County Fire and Rescue Association by adopting an ordinance and stating such." And what we would like to do, Mr. Warren and gentlemen, is, Danny Road, keep an open door with our association, we need this coordinator to work directly with us, not for us, work with us, we got to have input, we own the equipment, we own the trucks, we got 648 people, put service out there, at zero pay, we don't make a dime, so our input is important to what we do and how we're going to survive in this county. Second, quick thing, reason we up here, I'm with Dean Fowler, President of the Association, four or five members, it's ironic, and I hope this light don't go off, one year ago, today, one year ago today, I stood right here, and I know that because my fire department covers the Dambler Pennsylvania County file, it's senior citizens night, and I was here. Tonight is senior citizens night, a year later, I'm standing right here. Why am I standing here? Y'all good gentlemen voted one year ago to take a special ops truck that we are trying to get for the county and buy it. You sit right here a year ago and approved the sale of some police cars, we took your funding from the police cars, and thank you for buying that truck. You said, "Let's don't kick a can, Danny Road, let's get it straight and equip it." We went out, got the prices for the equipment, laid it out there, it's been on administrator's desk, county desk, since February, March, the equipment's laying out there to put it on it, and somebody I know, he got thrown away in a backup system, in a county coordinator's job, blah, blah, blah. I mean, y'all, this is your truck, it's not my truck, it's not Blaz's truck, this is the county's truck. Y'all voted a year ago, put it on the road, we put our time in it, zero pay, we're ready to put it on the road, we got the equipment, and that's going to come up later tonight, so I hope y'all look at that, we shouldn't even be here tonight, this is a year later. You bought the truck, it's like buying a new car, and don't put no gas in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, and thank you for 47 years of service and what you do, we really do appreciate you all. Jordan Key.
I'm Jordan Key, I live on Main Street in Chatham. I've heard a lot of different people say things, not just here, but at the pet center, about this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong, and this is wrong. And yeah, everything there is not going perfectly, but they have taken in almost 500 animals since they opened. 500's a lot of animals to be perfect on. I've encouraged people to talk to you, to talk to Mr. Smitherson, tell them what your concerns are. I had concerns, I asked to talk with Ms. Yarborough, she sat down and met with me, and Jill, and Jennifer Foley, and we talked, and I got answers to my questions, and I had things resolved that I had questions about, and I'm there about three or four times a week, so I see what's going on. I'm a retired nurse, I know about sanitation, I know a little bit about that in, I don't know what you do with dogs and cats exactly, and the different things, but I think they are making an honest effort to get this going and get it going right. But taking in 500 animals since they just opened, what was the day in July, the 20-something, I'm not even sure, but when they opened, that's almost 500, that's a lot. Those animals, and I think 240 or 30 or something, other than were cats, all those cats would be dead, because the county didn't take in any cats before. They went to Danville, and you know what happened to them from there, they'd be dead. So I think they are making an honest effort to get things going correctly, but when they talk about things like an open food container, that's not Lynchburg Humane Society's problem, that is an employee that works there that didn't put the lid on. That is an employee that's working in the kennels that put the dirty laundry on the floor. That's not something that the pet center is doing that's wrong. If they're not using gloves properly, you can't follow every employee around and assign someone to say, "Put your gloves on, don't set that food down there." I think they made some changes, and I feel like they're heading in the right direction, taking some positive steps, and I'm comfortable with the way things are progressing now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Karen Maute.
Nice to see everybody again. Since June 28th of this year, I've been asking if the county was going to enforce the zoning ordinance and require Mountain Valley Pipeline to apply for special use permits, since their 50-foot easement is not exempt from our ordinance. I still haven't gotten an answer, really. On August 15th, at a work session, the county attorney and assistant county administrator said that federal law preempts local law because Mountain Valley Pipeline has FERC That was an error, it does not have FERC certification. So I was shocked to see that there was a closed session about Mountain Valley Pipeline and our zoning ordinance, and my name attached to it, basically alluding to the fact that litigation had been threatened. I have not threatened any litigation, I'm trying to get answers to questions that any citizen should be able to ask and get answers to. So I objected to the closed session because it was a matter of policy, the people's business that was being discussed behind closed doors, and it should have been open. So I have, I tried to voice my objection, which according to the Freedom of Information, Virginia's open meeting law you should be able to do, and I didn't have the opportunity to do that, because everyone left the room, you must have been really hungry for that little break you would have in between, I don't know. But I'm going to read it now, it says, "Mr. Chairman, I'm Karen B. Maute, a resident of Westover District in Pennsylvania County. I protest the closing of this meeting. The reason you have listed for closing the meeting does not meet the provisions of Virginia's open meeting law. I ask that you reconsider your intent to discuss the matter in executive session. I further ask that this protest be recorded in the official minutes of the meeting as required by law." So I've got the statement here, I've got what I've emailed to you as well, that explains a little bit about why I felt that it should have been an open session, and I'm hoping that the public and that you are not of the mind that I've threatened any litigation. And that, again, is not a reason, as you look at this information from the Virginia Freedom of Information Council, I think it pretty clearly states that that meeting should have probably been open and not closed, and I'd like you to be a little bit more careful in the future, you know, if you're alluding to the fact that someone has threatened litigation, you know, that it's not there. Thank you. May I leave this?
Yes, please, leave it, Mrs. Smitherson.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Maute.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Deborah Dix.
I'm here to talk about something I saw under Virginia Correlation for Open Government, which we seem to be lacking in this area. These closed sessions used to be held at 7:00. Now you hold them at 3:00, I mean, 3:30, I mean, 4:30 on the same day, listed under work sessions, but not listed under the Board, this meeting. Also, on September 11th, you had a meeting about, you know, talking about standards of conduct that you have in your bylaws, whether to remove it or not, and you did remove some things in the past about being fined, and you see you couldn't be enforced. And then according to the newspaper article, Ms. Bowman was part of that legislators committee, and that was more or less, the code of conduct was for other boards that we do not vote on, like the agricultural board, which, you know, what happened there. That, anybody that has a bad conduct, you can remove them if we do not vote for them. We do not vote for anybody on other boards except the Board of Supervisors. So that code of conduct should stay, should not only stay for y'all, but for them too. So I hope you do not remove the code of conduct from your bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix. Next is Mr. Larry Strater.
Sit this right here. Everybody take a look at that right there. My name's Larry Strater, chief of law, road, fire, and rescue. Been the chief for 13 years, joined in 1992. Unfortunately, you know, it has to hit home for stuff like this happens, but fortunately, we lost everything. But now, the reason I'm here tonight, on April 12th, 2010, it was a Monday about lunchtime, we lost this guy right in the river. This is my nephew. April 18th, which was seven days later, he was found, thank God, by the Virginia Game Inland Fisheries. Day two of that search and rescue, Dambler lifesaving crew folded up, went home. It was up to the citizens, to the Virginia Game Inland Fisheries, to recover this body. No, it can't, ain't a vocabulary in my speech. Don't tell me no, it's not an answer I want to hear. But in saying that, I'm here on behalf of the Special Operations Team, myself, James Satterfield, we were two founding members of this team, three years into it, I stepped down, Boone had stepped up and took a torch, and he was running with it. And like Mike said, I'm going to iterate on that, y'all voted this truck for the county, which is a huge, huge asset for this whole Pennsylvania county. We got big lakes, we got rivers, all throughout, ponds, swimming pools, you know, and that's... But I'm here tonight requesting that y'all put $150,000 back into our budget, that y'all have used for something else that was obligated to this truck, so we can complete this... have used for something else that was obligated to this truck so we can complete this truck, put this truck in service, not we're going to bring it, park it out here on Main Street, and y'all put a for sale sign in. I just, you know, I don't know how no other way to put it. But, and that's, that's, you know, unfortunately, you know, it takes hitting home before stuff like this happen. If I didn't have lost my nephew, hey, we wouldn't be here tonight. I wouldn't be here begging for this money for the Special Ops Team. We didn't have a water rescue. They wouldn't let me do nothing. They kept threatening to lock me up. But the game won't give you the nickname Yalla-Take, and right to the day, that's what he's still called. But, no, I think we need, y'all need to really consider, consider putting this money back in. And another thing, Mr. Smitherman right here sat in our Fire and Rescue Association meeting last month, said life safety wasn't number one. You lose a kid or family member, you'll think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel Giles.
Live in the Bannister District, and I am the chief of Pennsylvania County Special Operations Team. Been with the team since its inception around six years ago, a little better than six years. I've been the chief for the last three years. And y'all have heard why we were, why we're here tonight, but I think it's long overdue that I stand before you and I tell you what the team is, who the members of the team are, what we have done, what we've accomplished, and what we're building towards. I, like all Special Ops members, you've heard about volunteers and what they do for their own agencies. Well, I hold dual membership, which is the same as every member of the Special Operations Team does. Been with Chatham Fire Department for the last 15 years, spent 12 years with the rescue squad. I've been in it since I was a child. I mean, my dad brought me up in it. But each one of us feel that it is so important that we have special operations in this county for our citizens, for anybody who lives, works, and plays, and travels through Pennsylvania County, that they have the safety that they so well deserve in this great county. This team is really second to none when it comes to any other agency in the county. And why, I want to tell you a little bit about our 30-member team. We are, we are, of course, 30-member team, like I said. Each member has two years with their home organization and meets all the requirements as a full member. They must have firefighter one, first aid, CPR, EMT, or higher, vehicle extrication certified, hazardous material operation certified, class three EVOC, emergency vehicle operator, and NIMs certified. Within 18 months, we send these people through a swift water and flood rescue class down in Charlotte, send them through introduction to technical rescue and rope rescue awareness. Now here's where the good part is. This is what we have on the team already for right now. The 30-member team, we have 30 firefighters, 20 instructors, 29 swift and floodwater technicians and specialists, 17 rope technicians, six trench rescue operation technicians, nine confined space technicians, 20 heavy vehicle technicians, 21 bus extrication technicians, 15 farm machinery technicians, three intermediate ALS providers, three paramedics, one critical care paramedic, and four Virginia State Certified Hazmat Specialists. We also have three collapsed rescue technicians and three more waiting to get into a class. That's a week-long class, same as a hazmat. Hazmat is six weeks worth of class. We are volunteers. We're a whole lot more than Duster Water Rescue Team. We are, we are a team that's certified to go out in multi-disciplines. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Tonja Reynolds.
I'm from the Callens, Gretna District. I am a member and a founding member of the SPCA of Pennsylvania County. We started 10 years ago, our goal being to improve the welfare of animals in Pennsylvania County. We supported Lynchburg coming in at the pet center. I saw a lot of negativity on Facebook, which concerned me. I went and I spoke with the people at Lynchburg in depth. They were very transparent. They came in and had to set up in six weeks, which would normally take six months to set up. I've spoken with Dr. Irwin in depth on Monday. He assured me that all the protocols and procedures that need to be followed are being followed. They've had to be tweaked a little bit. It's a little different animal than it was in Lynchburg Humane Society. You are coming in Animal Patrol animals right off a truck, you know, but they are tweaking everything, doing everything possible. They've got, he's confident in Lynchburg. They've got a vet tech and a veterinarian come in three days a week. He said he personally does walk-through once a week, and he's happy with the pet center. He's happy with what's going on. The SPCA of Pennsylvania County supports them wholeheartedly. We believe that they're doing the right thing, they're doing it for the right reasons, and we're glad they're here. And that's all. And if anybody, if you do have any concerns or questions, go directly to the people that know. Don't believe what you read on Facebook. Don't take it for granted. Just, you know, do the right thing, do your homework, and I'm confident in what they've told us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. That concludes our citizens' hearing tonight. And I'd like to thank all the citizens that did come out and speak tonight. We do appreciate your voice, and we certainly listened to your comments. I will open the public hearing for rezoning cases.
Consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on consent agenda? All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Public hearing rezoning cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to this, these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the first case, case number one, Brenda G. Scott. Mr. Sides. I'm going to open that at 8:03.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, case one, R-17-028. Brenda Short has petitioned to rezone 7.50 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. The parcel is located off State Road 1061, Iona Drive, in the Bannister Election District. The purpose for the rezoning is to make the property, zoning, consistent with the adjacent parcel of land, which is zoned A1, and incorporate the parcel back into the farm. Once the property is rezoned to agricultural, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 or a permitted use. The planning commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman Richard Armstrong, with Armstrong and Associates, should be here to represent the petition.
Mr. Armstrong, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay. Stay close, we may have some questions. No one signed up for this case. So I will close the public hearing at 8:05. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case R-17-028 to rezone 7.50 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. This rezoning is in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barkstall, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing unrolled call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barkstall.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Okay. Number seven, public hearing seven. Public hearing to receive citizens' input on the disposal of the following parcels of publicly owned property as follows. Point 064 of an acre plot located on the corner of Payne Street Extension in Gretna, Virginia. I'll open the public hearing at 8:06. Mr. Sides.
I think Mr. Smitherman's got this.
This is a small piece of property in the Gretna area that is a former, I think it's a triangular-shaped piece of the Mount Sinai High School. It's been set aside as a location for a monument commemorating that historic Black school. The parcel has been subdivided, and it's before you this evening for your consideration to dispose of that property so that a monument can be erected and carried from it.
Okay. No one signed up for that. So I'll close the public hearing at 8:08. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we dispose of the property identified as GPIN 2530-38-6169 and direct the county attorney to proceed with the title, with the D title process.
Mr. Barkstall made the motion. Mr. Hagerman seconded. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I received a call concerning this matter early today, that a citizen felt that he owned his property. And so I, you know, I obviously tried to explain that we had a GPIN number and a D, and I referred him to you, Mr. Hunt. Do we resolve that matter?
I spoke to him on the telephone. Ms. Flippin was in there. We talked about it. He was of the opinion that he now understands he does not own it. He actually wanted the ability to get this triangle piece as well, because it was adjacent to his property. I explained to him that the board was having a public hearing about this tonight, and I invited him to come and sign up to speak and talk to you, gentlemen. He's, his name was Mr. Stone, I believe. To my knowledge, he's not here tonight, but I spoke to him about it. And I will, before I do any deed work, I will 100% confirm that we are selling what we own.
I hope you've already done the deed work.
No, we have. We own, it's point 0604 acres, and we're comfortable that we own it.
Mr. Barber.
Mr. Hunt, the PIN number Mr. Barkstall read, that's not the same one I had in my book.
Yeah.
Which one did he read?
Just want to make sure we got it right.
I think he read the one on number eight, page eight, I believe. That one was the 98. That's what I thought it was. Supposed to be 43, 40.
The property card is on page 108, so let's compare this thing. It's on the back of it. It is...
It's in the book.
60. 2530-386169. What did we read here?
Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion to that correct GPIN.
Thank you for catching.
The one that says 2530-39436.
Yeah, that's a wrong PIN number.
Yes.
Just want to make sure we had the right one stated.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. And could you repeat the PIN number again, Mr. Hunt?
It's 2530-386169.
Okay. And Mr. Barkstall has amended his motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Hagerman, do you?
I will have to amend.
Seconded, you amend. Thank you. Any more discussion on this piece? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstall.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Number eight, public hearing to receive input on a proposed amendment to Chapter 6-6.3, property exempt by classification or designation of the Pennsylvania County Code to include real estate property owned by the New Prospect Baptist Church. Mr. Smitherman.
Mr. Chairman.
No, I'll open the public hearing. Let me do that at 8:11. No one signed up. So I can close it at 8:12. All right, Mr. Smitherman.
Two properties were submitted by New Prospect Baptist Church for consideration of this exemption. They, I believe, recently acquired these two properties. One is occupied, I believe it's by an elderly couple rent-free, and the second is used for community service activities. This has been vetted by Ms. Hammack and is presented with board's consideration. See?
Board's pleasure.
Yes, sir.
I need to abstain from this vote because I'm a member of New Prospect Baptist Church.
Okay.
So by staying, you're going to refer to the new decision?
Yes, I'm not going to have anything to say.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion dealing with the GPIN 2555-07-2288 and GPIN number I make the motion that we let this go through.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? Seeing unrolled call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Scars.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barkstall.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And Mr. Blackstock is abstained, as he is a member of the church.
Thank you. Public hearing, item nine, public hearing to receive input on an ordinance establishing a deadline for submission of applications for equalization of real estate assessment and for the Board of Equalization to complete its deliberations on such applications, prescribing the form of such applications and permitting the electronic filing of applications. I will open the public hearing at 8:14. Mr. Smitherman.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hunt.
Sure.
Mr. Hunt.
In the August 15, 2017, meeting, and I'm batting for Ms. Hammack tonight, the board directed staff to have a public hearing, which would essentially change our process relating to Board of Equalization. What the ordinance, if the board chooses to accept it after the public hearing that's contained on page 150, if they pass that ordinance, it makes the following changes to our current policy related to Board of Equalization. What it does is it sets as the last day to accept appeals by application as June 22, 2018, and sets the last day for the Board of Equalization to complete their work as August 31, 2018. This is allowed by Virginia Code 5831-3331, and this was a recommendation brought forward by Shirley Hammack to add efficiency to Board of Equalization and bring a close to their process further so that we can complete the 45-day appeal notice requirement. Staff recommends this, and Shirley Hammack recommends this. After the public hearing, if the board chooses to make this change, you will need a motion to adopt the ordinance that's on page 150.
We had no citizens sign up for the public hearing, so I close it at 8:17. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance and application is presented in a packet with the last day to accept appeal applications is June twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, and the last day for the Board of Equalization to complete its work is August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, Ms. Flippin?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item ten, auction results concerning Old Northside High School field in Gretna, Virginia. Mr. Smitherman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware and as articulated during the public comments section this evening, we did put up for public auction a portion of property that was at the former Northside High School. We advertised with a minimum low bid of fifty-one thousand four hundred, which represents the assessed value of the property. And I, just to be clear, I believe it's two parcels that combined are valued at that amount. We received six bids. The high bid was twenty thousand five hundred, but it did not meet the minimum threshold specified by the board at your meeting a few months ago. This meeting, as you know, or this item, as you know, is discussed this afternoon during the work session. It's our understanding that the board may wish to consider selling this property to the high bidder. And if that's so, we just need a motion to sell the property for the high bid amount to direct the county attorney to proceed with the deed and title for sale.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the county sell the property in question to the Elba Missionary Baptist Church in the amount of their bid and authorize the current county attorney to proceed with the deed and title.
Mr. Chairman, if I may be so bold, from Mr. Smith, to Ms. Diggs, to Mr. Ruff, and Ms. Jennings, the queen, I would say this, if I may be so bold, as Paul-
Mr. Davis, let's get it on the floor first.
Okay.
Mr. Barber, Mr. Barber seconded it, correct?
Mr. Hagerman.
Mr. Hagerman seconded it. Motion made by Mr. Barksdale, seconded by Mr. Hagerman. I'll open the floor for discussion and, okay, Mr. Davis.
I agree. That's all I was going to say was that. I was getting to that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jennings. As, as, as the Apostle Paul said to King Agrippa, and then King Agrippa said, "Almost thou persuadest me." Ms. Jennings, this ain't King Agrippa. I'm persuaded. Thank you.
Any, any other, any other discussion?
Just briefly.
Mr. Blackstock?
The board discussed this this afternoon, but it was nice to see the community rally around this issue. And I know many of you, and I attended junior high school on that very site. But I also know the historical significance of that site, the African-American community. And I think it's wonderful what your church is going to do. Anything to improve over there? It's been lying dormant, I guess, since I was in junior high school. And I'm all bald headed and fat now. I'm a little skinny as a rail. But I do, I think it's wonderful the way y'all rallied around that. So this was one of the easier things on the agenda tonight.
Any, any? Any other comments from the board? I, I would just like to say that it truly does my heart good to see Pennsylvania County citizens take on the endeavor to improve this situation. I think it will be a blessing to the whole community there, and it'll be value added to Pennsylvania County as a whole, not just that area right around the church. So thank you all very much for being here tonight. And you're right, Mr. Blackstock, this is the easiest thing we'll do tonight. Thank you all. Okay, roll call, Ms. Flippin?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Absolutely, yes. Item eleven, Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Service Contract Renewal. You got anything to say, Mr. Beaton?
Yes, sir. I'm here to create a question.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract that's in our packet for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, performance contract renewal and revision.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the item? Yes, ma'am. Roll call.
Bart, Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Barber? And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do. Request from Fire and Rescue Association.
I hate that Ms. Jennings run out. I think I might need her up here with me. Mr. Chairman, members of board supervisors, I'm here tonight representing Fire and Rescue. It's a humbling experience for me. I know a lot take it for granted, but I'm representing six hundred, six hundred and eighty-eight people that run approximately nine thousand calls a year in Pennsylvania County. And that's daily. Myself, since Sunday morning at seven o'clock, I've run seventeen calls for Pennsylvania County. And I'm not alone. These folks all over the county are doing this. That being said, I'm here tonight to represent an issue. In two thousand fifteen, the county administrator at the time, Clarence Monday, and I sat down to address a concern for technical rescue situations in Pennsylvania County. If you all have watched the news in the last three or four weeks, hurricanes, tornadoes, structural collapse, water rescues have gone on all across the south part of the United States. We're not exempt from it, gentlemen. It could happen here this weekend. That being said, he asked me, and he was concerned with the fact, we'd had an earthquake in northern part of the state, we'd had some tornadoes in the northwest part of the state, and he asked me what we're going to do if we have that situation. I explained to him the capabilities of the fire departments, what we had in place. I explained to him that the state of Virginia has what's called FEMA Task Force Teams. We have teams in place that will come. Virginia Beach will respond here. All of you know how long it takes to come from Virginia Beach to Pennsylvania County. That being said, the city of Danville has the equipment. Lynchburg Fire Department has the equipment. That being said, we have a mutual aid agreement to states, and I have a copy of it if you need to read it, that we will have the equipment in place and it's to be used as a backup to the equipment that we already have in place. I've got the copy with the county administrator at the time was Dan Sleeper who signed it, and also the city manager had signed it in the city of Danville. That being said, he asked me to take a look and do some research and see about finding a heavy rescue truck. Went out and started looking, and to my surprise, the truck was going to be new, eight hundred plus thousand dollars. I went back and sat down and talked to him. And at that time, he took his glasses off and set them down, and he told me, he said, "Look," he said, "if I go mention eight hundred thousand dollars, I'll be unemployed and you'll be run out of the Fire and Rescue Association." So we talked about it and decided to go find the used truck. At that time, we went out, we found a two thousand three Pierce Lance Fire Truck at a dealership in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, which is now Rescue One that you all own. The truck was advertised for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Myself and two other fire chiefs traveled in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, worked a deal with the people there with a lot of extensive upgrades to the truck, and came up with a final price of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars once all of those corrections and upgrades were done. The truck will be able to cover multiple needs. Those needs being to include rehab at fire scenes. We're sending firefighters out here. We had one in the Baptist Hall area yesterday. It took almost an hour to get rehab to those guys. You know what the weather was like. You've been in turnout gear fighting fire. It's inexcusable for us not to be able to put that stuff there. They called an air truck from Yanseville to come and fill up air bottles. This truck will have that capability. Extrication, both light and heavy. We've had an instance this year, I know all of you remember, right up here next to the Ag Center where we had a tractor-trailer rolled over, had two drivers pinned in it for almost an hour and a half. The extrication truck that came and did that work came from Blair's Fire Station. That equipment on air truck, we were lucky we had enough to do that. Had it been just a little bit more, we'd have been in trouble. We wouldn't have had enough. That being said, this truck will have that. High angle, low angle rescue, which is rope rescue, somebody down a ravine, that type stuff, somebody on a water tower, any of those situations, farm machinery extrication, structural collapse, water rescues, as well as rest of the technical rescue disciplines. That being said, we've worked on this truck now, like I said, since February of two thousand fifteen. You all purchased the truck for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Once the truck got here, we started taking equipment off of the old truck that was in place with a blown up engine. It's set for a year with a blown engine before we started to do anything. That being said, we put the air system on the truck. We sent it to Pleasant Garden, North Carolina, spent nine hundred and forty dollars on the truck to have that put up. Then, at the end of the fifteen sixteen budget, we approached you all for a carryover of a hundred and five thousand dollars. You all graciously approved it. We've worked since that point in time to spend that money out of a three-ten account to purchase equipment and put it in place. There were some stalls put in place. I'm not going to go there. But that equipment, the money is encumbered, the equipment is ordered, it's on the way. We found in doing so that through the bid process, Connie Gibson, bless her heart, she's basically wanted to pull her hair out dealing with us with all these single pieces, but bless her heart, she's a trooper and she hung in there. We found that we could get better prices through the bid process, and we've been able to buy extra equipment for it. Originally, when you all got the list of equipment, it was over three hundred thousand dollars to be spent on equipment on this truck. We spent a hundred and five, we asked to carry over a hundred and sixteen from the sixteen seventeen budget, which was funds that Fire and Rescue didn't spend in the sixteen seventeen budget. When we came to the finance meeting, we thought we had pretty good results. We felt good about what we had heard from you all, and some of you actually told me in the lobby, "You're going to be okay. We're going to take care of it." That being said, the Policy and Procedure Committee for Fire and Rescue met two weeks later. They sat down and started talking about Fire and Rescue and rescue coverage. And I realized that's an issue. It's a great big bite to bite off. But that being said, we needed three ambulances in the county. We need to add one, and we did a QRV, Quick Response Vehicle for ALS. I applaud you for that. That being said, that money was taken out of the Fire and Rescue budget. Two days later, I talked with three of you all that's sitting in front of me right now, and you were dumbfounded when I told you that the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the rescue truck was used for that three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Didn't even realize that they'd taken the money. Not to mention the fact that they intend on taking fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars from the budget between now and the end of the fiscal year from Fire and Rescue. To date, we've spent, we've invested two, two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars in funds on the truck. We've taken approximately a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollar worth of equipment that they had on the old truck and that they had on trailers, that they had on a pickup truck to respond to technical rescue. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars if you sit down and do the math. That's invested. We need a hundred and fifty thousand, actually it's a hundred and sixty-nine if you do the list price of equipment. But I'm banking on Connie Gibson in purchasing to be able to save that much money and, and finish this truck up so we can put it on the road. I just don't see having four hundred thousand dollars sitting there collecting dust. The county taxpayers and citizens not being able to rely on that truck for services and not put the rest of the equipment on it. And I'm asking tonight on behalf of Fire and Rescue Association that you fund the other hundred and fifty thousand dollars and let's put this truck on the road.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Any questions for Mr. Fowler from the board? Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, before, the, the numbers Mr. Fowler gave, they don't match up with the numbers that I'm looking at. Not in this package. On page one sixty-five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
And I, I agree with Mr. Davis. They, the figures do not match. So, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what, what to do.
Staff, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I think the request, you know, it's a long circuitous journey. We started back in April where the original request was a hundred and five thousand dollars for the FY eighteen budget. That, at the time, there was a hundred and six thousand dollars in the bank unused. And we said at the time, as we were struggling with a really tight budget, which we are in right now, as you know. And we said, well, they got a hundred and six they hadn't spent yet, so let's let them carry that over into the coming year and equip the truck with that, and we'll come back to this in FY nineteen. Since April fir-, or between April first and today, that hundred and five has been spent down to thirty-one thousand oh five four. So they requested that the unused funds from Fire and Rescue, which the Fire and Rescue budget is all twenty-five, twenty-six agencies in one budget, and there were unused funds from AltaVista, from Fuel, from Tires, from what have you. And they requested that a hundred and sixteen, four twenty-five be carried over from last year into this year's budget, which amounts to a new appropriation, which we do. And we, and we did several carryovers this year. So that one sixteen, four twenty-five, actually, it was advertised as a carryover amount for Fire and Rescue. However, after that advertisement, and after I met with the Fire and Rescue Association at one of their meetings, the issue of the third truck and the ALS Unit Four hurt and for our backup service really bubbled up to a head. And this board decided to take that one sixteen, four twenty-five, instead of putting it on Rescue One as requested by the Fire and Rescue Association, decided to put that money toward the extra emergency medical service truck that the Fire and Rescue Association requested. Fire and Rescue Association also requested that we hire a public safety coordinator, which you also did the same time you reappropriated these funds toward that truck. So what we are trying to do as staff and as your finance committee is trying to do is to get through this year without dipping in unappropriate fund balance. And tonight, their request, which originally was to reappropriate that one sixteen, has turned into a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And regardless of the amount, whether it's five thousand, ten thousand, or two hundred and fifty thousand, it has to come out of our unappropriate reserves. And for that reason, staff recommends that you deny the request and that instead, wait until we hire this new public safety coordinator where we can receive some advice on where we need to be making our investments in the Fire and Rescue service. You know, this is a new day for Fire and Rescue in Pennsylvania County. The county, and most importantly, the board of supervisors, has decided to take a more active role in how we allocate funds for this service. And our first step in that is to hire someone to help us along that path. So our recommendation as staff is that we put everything on hold until we get staffed up and we're able to talk about from a global perspective, what are the most pressing needs and what do we do with our very limited funding in the general fund of Pennsylvania County.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the request and ask the yet to be hired public safety coordinator to provide advice as to future investments in fire and rescue apparatus.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barksdale. Discussion?
I'm going to stick my neck out, but I'm going to say what I think. A budget is just that. I'm one of the people that supported when the Fire and Rescue Association come and wanted to purchase this truck. But since we set the budget, fire, we had an incident in northern Pennsylvania County, my district, some of the Bannister district, where AltaVista Rescue Squad folded in just a matter of a few days. So we had to find coverage for people when they pick their phone up and call for a rescue. So we had to find coverage for people, when they pick their phone up and call for a rescue squad, for somebody to answer. What this board did was we went to Region 1 and asked them to cover AltaVista's area of pay, by the way, Region 1 is paid. And we struggled, uh, along, we also had, I think, Gretna and Cool Branch and North Halifax increase their coverage areas some too, if I'm correct in that. I know North Halifax did. But we signed an extension, this board had to do something. We signed an extension, uh, to add a truck, and we got a letter from the Fire and Rescue Association saying how much it was needed. This entire board got that letter. That how important was to, how important it was to add that truck. We signed a contract to add that truck, and we went from 90 some thousand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smithman, to $350,000. That was not in the budget. Our reserves already being depleted. We've got some financial issues. We also, we, we've also discussed many times that we have no organized way of dispersing money, uh, to Fire and Rescue. And one of the primary, um, objectives that come out of that study, and was a recommendation of Fire and Rescue, was to hire a public safety coordinator. Maybe not by that title, but that's what we gave them. This board voted to authorize up to...
I think we're all in at 85,000.
Somewhere like that, in this current year's budget, to go ahead and hire this person. I think it would, I support hiring that person, I voted for it. I think we need to get the person on board to take a close look at how we are spending our money on Fire and Rescue, um, and I support Mr. Smithman's recommendation in the packet.
Other discussion? I will say, um... It's a difficult thing, when you have Mr. Strater, um, stand up and give his personal testimony and experiences. However, in saying that, and it's, it's more about the financial conditions that we're presently in, for me, and, uh... I just, uh... You know, I hope we can get the individual hired quickly, Mr. Fowler, and you all can work together so that we can accomplish all of our needs and goals. And, uh, you know, I do understand the budget problems we have right now, and they're not of your making. It's a lot of factors in there, so, that's all I have to say. Do we need a roll call?
Yes, no?
Uh, we'll look at our cheat sheet.
No.
All in favor of the motion as presented, uh, to deny until the yet-hired public safety coordinator to provide advice as to the future investment in Fire and Rescue? And, and I do want to reflect in noting this, that the number that was in our packet that we received was about $34,000 less than what was presented.
In my address, I explained to him that we've put the money in to finish the 116, was what we was trying to avoid to get it through.
Okay, thank you. All right, everybody in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. It's 5-2. All opposed, raise your right hand. 5-2, motion carries. Pennsylvania County School Bus Vehicle Lease. Mr. Smithman.
Ms. Vanderhyde's approaching the podium right now to let you know about this item.
Uh, the Pennsylvania County Schools entered into a lease for buses and vehicles, and, um, in order for them to be able to do this, you all have to appropriate that money to our budget, even though they have gone out and they've, um, gone through the procurement process for these buses and vehicles, they have done so, and they have this money in their budget to pay the lease payments. It's a three-year lease. First Citizens was the successful bidder on this project. They were able to purchase, um, the vehicles for $678,714. And the reason you all have to vote and put your stamp on it is because they do not have taxing authority or the ability to raise funds. Um, but these monies are included in their budget, they'll make their first payment this year, and then they'll have two additional years of payments. And, um, this is about the third or fourth one that you all have approved. So we are recommending that you all, um, appropriate $678,714 to Fund 210, which is in our budget, for the purpose of purchasing 10 buses slash vehicles, 'cause some of them are, um, vehicles that help with the maintenance of those buses. So it's 10 vehicles total.
Any questions for Ms. Vanderhyde? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to ratify the attached lease and appropriate $678,714 to Fund 210 for the purpose of purchasing 10 buses, vehicles, slash vehicles, and have these funds maintained by the Treasurer's Office.
Second. Motion being by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis. Discussion on the motion.
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Any oversight on their capital purchase, like vehicles? I know the budget's a tight, the sheriffs want them buying new vehicles. I feel like they buying these buses all the time, and I mean, I see new ones. I hardly ever see an older bus when I'm riding around.
Well, all of that goes through the school board. I mean, usually it comes to us kinda after the fact. We don't see those documents beforehand. I would say if that's something you all would like to see before they make their next bus lease, that perhaps you all would, um, authorize the county administrator to maybe send a letter to say, "We would like to review this in the future."
I like watching the age of the fleet, just curiosity, 'cause like I say, I can't even tell you, last time I seen an old bus on the road, they, they all were fairly new, and I mean, with the budget, there's probably, we're gonna be on this next budget, that's just what I'm thinking about.
I, I had a similar question, Mr. Barber, so I, I had the conversation with Mr. Lovelace, the now-retired guy, and he said that this system was set up just to keep the rotation so that there'd be changing them out about every 300,000 miles on a bus, so... I mean, again, we're back to that same thing, we cover such a large area, it doesn't take long to wear them out, so...
Just curious.
But it'd be good information to get next time. Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item 14, Pennsylvania County Schools, 2017, 2018 Budget Amendments.
This is an amendment for you all, and in the last few years, since we have to adopt our budget so early in the year, a lot of times, the schools don't have confirmation of what their state and federal monies will be for the following year, so it's basically an estimate. So we have gotten those confirmed figures, so the change in their budget this year for FY18 is $720,683.60, and in your packet, it shows, um, those categories, it's the seven categories that you all usually adopt their budget, and those amendments have been placed in those buckets. And I just want to note, there is $123,687 of local funds, but they're local funds, not out of the county's general fund. They're from local funds, from the Boys and Girls Club, and, um, different things, and they're actually outlined in the letter that was sent to us. So I just wanted to, you know, calm maybe some of your anxiety about maybe appropriating this amount of money, thinking that maybe it's coming or costing us more money, but it's not, it's just their state, federal, and then their local funds. And those local funds, um, make up the Hurt Trust Fund, Rebates and Refunds, Boys and Girls Club Rent, and Vocational, Adult and Vocational, no, they're all state, let's see, to the Boys and Girls Club Rent. So it's only a, a few that make up that $123,000 figure, but it's nothing that's gonna cost the county any funds.
Any questions from Ms. Vanderhyde? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the budget amendments to the school board's 2017 through 2018 budget, based on the attached request from the Pennsylvania County School Board.
Second. Motion being by Mr. Barksdale, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Warren?
I was getting to you. Mr. Warren, I'd hate to bother you, but can I just drop this off to you so I can go?
Uh, you can leave it with the county administrator.
Um, I would rather not.
It's up to you.
I can't leave it with anyone else?
Leave it with the county attorney.
Yeah, that's okay, I'll mail it to the media. And just the FYI, Lynchburg is aware...
We're through with citizens' comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I, I'm still gonna say something, Lynchburg is aware of the concerns that the people have in this county, and that's why she's getting ahead of it.
There's, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, I can't, uh, there's, um, there's some of, some of the things that we were told here, that I don't have any, any, uh...
Let, let's wait till we get the board announcements for that, Mr. Davis, okay?
All right.
Okay, thank you, let's follow the agenda if you don't mind. Uh, recommendations from Legislative Committee, I don't think we had any, did we, Ms. Scares?
No, no recommendations.
Thank you. Item 16, recommendations from Joint CRT and Finance Committee.
All right, uh, the only recommendation we had was to allow staff to set up a public hearing to upgrade the 911 radio systems, uh, to the tune of 1.698 million dollars. And, uh, I, for me personally, I think it's, uh, something that needs to be done, it's gonna cover the Tunstall area and the Berry Hill, uh, Mega Park, and, uh, these are both upgrades that need to happen.
Comes from the committee, so requires no second. Any discussion on the item? Yes, sir, Ms. Warren.
I just have one question. Mr. Hunt, did anybody research back in the minutes, Harris assured this county, when they spent 14 and a half million dollars, that it would cower the county, and if it had to be any tower there, they would do it, then no call? It's in the minutes, somewhere, if you trace it, if you can find it. We can try to find it, um, I also refer your question, Jim Davis, he knows the... Okay, 'cause Mr. Horrible said he heard it, Miss Neen, and I know I heard it. I will, I will research that and get you something back, but... Okay. Now, was there a selling point over Motorola when we chose theirs?
Thank you, Mr. Barber, any other discussion?
Mrs. Smithman.
I will say, I will say anecdotally to Mr. Barber's statement, uh, that that is absolutely true. My understanding, and it's anecdotal, and we can get you the, the evidence, is that the county did not deploy the full system that would enact that guarantee. We cut back on a few towers when we, when we inked the deal for 14 million dollars.
I just knew, I heard, heard them say that.
You're, you're exactly right, and I believe we did some research for Mr. Scares's committee for that several months ago, and what we got to at the end of the day was that we cut back the system.
Okay.
And that's why we didn't get the...
I knew I wasn't hearing stuff, I heard it instead of that guy's mouth. And, we get that from Mr. Scares, there was a percentage of coverage in our contract, I don't know what that percentage was, um, but they have hit that more. The reason why it wasn't higher is 'cause they originally rolled out something like a 13 or 14 million dollar system, and we did like an 11 million dollar system, something
like that. It's a number of towers that were cut back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, great question.
I wish I'd been right.
Me too.
So do we.
Well, the good thing, Mr. Chairman, just to let him know, I, I don't know if you were sitting in the meeting, but that we're gonna try to roll this into the current bond, and hopefully it, I mean, it's gonna be not as taxing on us financially as, as it could be.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scares, any other discussion?
I'd just like to point out one other thing before we vote on this. This is another issue that, for the Sheriff's Office and Fire and Rescue was a lack of coverage, and that we, they wanted a tower in a budget. So this is another part of a request from Fire and Rescue and the Sheriff's Office for not only one tower, but two, for coverage in Pennsylvania County. And this is at the tune of about, what is this, about a million and a half dollars?
One and a half.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstone?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes. Okay, we had some items you added to the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, item, I think I've, when I originally did the amendment to the agenda, I listed item number wrong, but I guess this would be item number 17. I make a motion that we set a public hearing to add a, uh, fee to the, for the courthouse renovation fund.
Second.
I guess this would be to amend the county ordinance for that.
Any discussion on setting the public hearing? Seen none, need a roll call, Mr. Hunt?
Just show hands, Phil.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next item added.
Mr. Chairman, this would be item 18, um, we, uh, I make a motion that we authorize the county administrator to write a letter of support, uh, to the regional transit, um, project, uh, as presented tonight by Mrs. Betty Adams.
Second. Motion being by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Item 19.
The other one was the letter of support, uh, Youth Commission.
That it?
That's it.
We already did the Youth Commission. Yeah, we did that earlier.
Okay. Uh, we're down to board announcements, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Barksdale.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale, Mr. Davis.
Um, I don't have any announcements, I just have a statement to make. I want to thank the county attorney, as well as the county administrator, Mr. Sides, uh, and Sister Vanderhyde, for doing a great job today, as well as board members. I think we made progress in our meetings, uh, I think it was a very eventful day. And I do appreciate the staff, that probably most of the citizenry wouldn't understand, but they are the worker bees, and, uh, they do the job. And, uh, we're making changes, and we're, we're headed in a different direction. This is a new day, as the county administrator said today, and I agree. Uh, it requires risks, and we're taking risks, because we want to make Pennsylvania County the number one county in the state of Virginia. And that is in our, our hearts, and that's what we want. And we have, uh, the mechanisms, I do believe, in place to take us to that level, and, uh, so that the citizenry in Pennsylvania County would be happy as well as proud to be and live in Pennsylvania County. I want to thank the media, Mr. Luke Burris, as well as Ms. Simp kiss, that always does a good job, as well as our law enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prosecution rests.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Scares.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, want to thank, uh, public thank you to the Brasville Volunteer Fire Department, while, I don't want to make this a habit, my youngest daughter, uh, had a wreck, and, uh, flipped her car, hit a couple of trees, and walked away unscathed. She was wearing her seatbelt, so I want to thank those guys, uh, in all they do, and, uh, keep me in prayers, I only have one child left, and I don't want him to have a wreck either, so...
Thank you, Mr. Scares, we'll certainly do that. Mr. Blackstock?
I'd like to, uh, I think all the board members got an invitation, um, but, uh, the Town of Hurt is celebrating their 50th anniversary this Saturday at, from 2 until 7, and then at 8:15, or either 8:30, depends on darkness, they're gonna have fireworks. So everyone's invited over to the Town of Hurt for their 50th, uh, celebration, uh, of reforming of the Town of Hurt, which I grew up in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Hayes.
Uh, I don't have anything to say, but, uh, I'm, uh, it's like I said, uh...
I don't have anything to say, but I'm, it's like I said, before this meeting is declared over, I want to know some stuff. I got some questions I want to ask. I want to know some.
Okay.
All right. Who's, who's this person that we were supposed to hire? I don't ever remember voting for one. I don't even remember knowing anything about one. I don't know, I don't know his name, if somebody else was hired?
You're talking about the public safety coordinator?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to remember which board meeting that was at. We approved the position, at the same meeting, we approved the new ambulance for the north end of the county, and we funded the position and the ambulance through the fire and rescue budget. We have not hired anyone yet. We just put advertisement on the street a couple of weeks ago, and we haven't done any interviews yet. But that is a new position approved by the board a couple, I guess last month.
Well, how about, how about?
Two days today and the last meeting.
July meeting?
Last meeting. Then it was the third, there was a third meeting, the third meeting back, so it's between the third and the second meeting today. In other words, the second or the third meeting. The man you're talking about of this situation, I thought he was on, like you said, I thought that was the last meeting or the meeting after that. It's one of those, it's one of those two.
Well, how about, how about, how about the money that we were supposed to give to somebody? Money that apparently was, I took it that we had, was, had given this to, paid something else with.
You know, all the money we put on the, the new truck and the new person came from the existing 2018 budget that we're in now. So we didn't appropriate any new money. I don't know that it was obligated for anything else other than AltaVista, the former AltaVista Rescue Squad, which is now not in business, carryover funds from last year's budget, but I don't know that it was obligated to any other project of this.
So we, we told these people that we had.
That we had.
That we had spent it, that we had.
Not exactly. We denied their request in the, in April, when we approved the budget we're in now. We denied their initial request, and we told them, we'll consider it next year, which is come this coming April. Since then, they made another request for money.
See you.
And we denied that request also. So it's been requested twice, and it's been denied twice, but it was never appropriated for this purpose of the Rescue One truck. It's never been set aside for that, but they requested it twice. We denied it.
Looks like we approved the position in August.
Yeah, on page 47 in your packet, it's in here, it says, "A motion came from Finance Committee to create the position of Public Safety Coordinator and authorize the use of existing and unobligated capital funds in the Fire and Rescue FY17-18 budget. The following roll call vote was recorded." It was unanimous. That's on page 47, and that's in the August minutes.
And that, that was supported by the study?
Yes.
That position?
Yeah. It's on page 47, the other minutes, keep them going back.
So the long and short of it is, there is a laundry list of things that fire and rescue needs or wants and requests, and so far, we're funding a goodly amount of that, but we can't, it's not an unlimited pool of funds. And at some point, we have to say, that's all we can do right now, let's try again next year. And that's what we've said, we said it again tonight, I think, and that's what we said back in April, is we can only do so much at a time. Since that time, we had a quote, "emergency" via AltaVista Rescue Squad going defunct, and we basically scraped every dollar we could find and put it on that issue. So we, we've, we've never promised, we've never appropriated, we've never unappropriated, but we've used the money within our budget and adjusted it to take care of what this board deemed the most pressing concerns at the time.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Hagen?
Did, did everybody in here, did everybody on this board know that happened? Because I, I do not remember that, and you can put it down as "old age" or whatever, but I don't remember it either.
No, I do remember it.
You do remember it?
Yeah.
I guess from, from my perspective, I thought we were going to take that 116 rollover from last year and give it to this Rescue One, and that's where I think some of the confusion came from. I didn't realize we were taking that rollover money, that was going to, I thought it was earmarked for Rescue One. I misunderstood that. So when we made that vote in August, I, I didn't realize that that money was going to disappear for any upgrades on Rescue One. So that's, that was my perspective and probably my misunderstanding.
And, and that was their request, that 116 for whatever be put on Rescue One, but we had three requests from them, and we could only fund two. And at the end of the day, we funded the coordinator and the Regional One truck, and then we ran out of money, quite frankly. There was no more money to put on Rescue.
Well, this, this here says that a motion came from a Finance Committee. Was the total Finance Committee on?
What's everybody there?
I don't recall who was there. I'm sorry.
I was just trying to remember if everyone was at the Finance Committee that day. Finance Committee is Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Warren, and.
Mr. Scares and Mr. Davis.
Rebecca.
I'll have to go back and look, Mr. Hagman, I can't remember right offhand, I'm getting older too.
I do believe everyone was there, and when it came over here, the vote was seven oh, everybody voted for the motion.
Well, that's.
According to the minutes.
That's, it's got to, I voted for that, and if I did, anyway, will you?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hagen.
Is that all right, Mr.?
That satisfies you, Mr. Hagen, for right now?
For right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barber.
I'm just going to make mine brief. I didn't like what we had to do there, cut and approve that request, but I think, Mr. Blackstock, I'm going to echo what he said. The money was there, but did, did extra rescue become the more pressing factor? I mean, people could die, they needed it right there. So anyway, I mean, there will never be enough money in this county to fund every request. I mean, I've been, I don't know if they're keen to, you have to prioritize, and that was the priority. And also, they wanted this person, coordinator, in place, so we did that. And I, really, I don't think we turned them down. I think we're waiting until we get them in place as recommendations, in the new budget year is coming up, because we're out of money this year, I mean, there's no doubt about it. But I did talk to Robbie Woodall, and he assured me Lynchburg has a hazmat team, Dammel will back up the county before I even thought about the decision, while he was hanging. But the rescue, in my opinion, was the main thing we needed to do on Mr. Blackstock and the county, because I mean, they, as in the departments goes, that's got to be covered, there's no doubt about it. That's how we got the other two. That's how we ended up with three rescues we tried to cover as backups for these departments, because people are alive at this day, but, I mean, everybody on this board voted to take that money, do it, and, I mean, anybody on here could have made a substitute motion to pull it out of the general fund, but I don't think it'd be financially wise at this point of what we're going through to the next motion, so.
Thank, thank, is that it, Mr. Barber?
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'll remember Sheriff Taylor's.
That's what I was going to do, yeah. I, I, I think, Mr. Barber and, and Mr. Blackstock and everyone for their comments, and, you know, I concur. I, I had a lot of difficulty with this issue, because I, I think, to the man, we all appreciate and are supportive of our fire and rescue, and realize how valuable they are to our community. And I, I too, Mr. Barber, had, had conversations with the Dammel lifesaving crew, and matter of fact, Mr. Scares and I took a tour over there and saw how theirs was some time ago, and they've made the commitment until we can get our own house in complete order. And I, I fully support and hope that someday in the near future, we can have our complete unit up and running. So it's not a, for me personally, it's not a, no, we're not going to do this, it's, give us a little time to, to get the finances in order so we can do, do it right and not, you know, not leave something unfunded. We certainly had an emergency need in the northern end of the county, and we had to take care of it. So, you know, I just, I just hope everyone would understand that. It was not a no to our fire and rescue, it was just that we, we had to spend the money somewhere else right now to cover fire and rescue needs that, you know, not say they were more important, but they were certainly more pressing at the current time. So, and also, want to send out our thoughts and prayers from the entire board, to Sheriff Mike Taylor and, and the loss of his mother. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. And I just want to share, before I close tonight, some numbers that we received in relationship to the Pennsylvania Pet Center. The total intake from July the 1 through September 17 was 492 pets, 228 dogs, 262 cats, and two rabbits. The total intake for dogs in Pennsylvania County in all of 2016 was 587. These folks are averaging almost 114 a month, and if you keep up with them on Facebook, they've adopted out 160 pets already. We used to do about 60. I've had conversations with the local vets, and they are praising the Lynchburg Center, the Lynchburg Humane Society and the running of the Pennsylvania Pet Center. Yes, we probably have an issue or two, but I don't know any business that ever starts that in the first 60 to 90 days don't have some hiccups, because you just came playing for everything, no matter how good you are. So I would like to say, and by the way, they are meeting the 98% save rate.
Thank you.
And I think that's wonderful. So, I, I appreciate everybody being here tonight, thanks for all the citizens being here, and we will consider this meeting adjourned. Oh, you, I'm sorry. I didn't think you, you said enough tonight, I didn't think you had anything else to say.
I do have some.
A report from county administrator.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. First thing I want to say is how much I appreciate, and I appreciate Mr. Davis and others bringing up our staff. I was eating lunch with our new Assistant County Administrator today, and I said, I don't think I've ever said it out loud before, I said, "We got a lot of smart people that work at Pennsylvania County Government, and it is an absolute pleasure to work with the professionals in this room." She definitely should be acknowledged. All the ones you see here tonight and others, we have a really top-flight group working on Center Street, and I just want to acknowledge that publicly, that it's my privilege to work with them. I also want to say, give my, and today's meeting, we had a lot of heavy-duty information presented to the board today, and I think that's indicative of the quality of, of your staff that I'm, I am lucky to be hired to work with. The information presented today, the decisions made today, the things we deliberated over today are indicative of what life's going to be like the next six months. We have a lot of big things to tackle, and we have a lot of hard decisions to make. I do feel for the fact that, and, and I want to make slight reference to something that was said during the public comments, it is a difficult thing for the Fire and Rescue Service to compete against 22 other departments in the general fund. And I talked to the Fire and Rescue Association about this the other night, and if there was a dedicated revenue stream, and if fire and rescue was separate from the general fund, they may have the opportunity to, we may have the opportunity to better plan where those expenses and expenditures and investments are made over the course of time. So my comment was, they're in competition with 24 other people, and if you ask the superintendent, what's most important, it's education. And if you ask the librarian, what's most important, it's the library. And the sheriff will say the sheriff, and Kim will say finance, and I'll say administration, and that's the competition that fire and rescue finds itself in, in the general fund. And those were the comments I made to the association the other night, and I look forward to working with them over the next many months and probably years to get to the point where it is a self-sustaining service for the citizens, and we appreciate their work very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Miller, you want to introduce a new county, Assistant County Administrator?
Oh, sorry, I did that at the work session. Mr. Richard Hicks comes to us from several places, but his longest tenure, I believe, is in Farmville, North Carolina, where he was town manager. A town manager in North Carolina is basically a city manager, it is a city manager, where he ran electric system. Did you have gas? Electric, water, sewer, pretty big operation. He is, he is everything I'm not, and that's why we hired him. He, he augments my weaknesses, Greg's weaknesses, Baden's weaknesses, and he came up against stiff competition. At the end of the day, we thought Mr. Hicks was the perfect fit for our team, and we look forward to several years of his guidance, of his participation, and his work for Pennsylvania County. So we're glad he's here.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, it is good to have you here. Mr. Davis had a question?
Yes, sir, I, I have a statement, I failed to mention to you, Mr. Hicks. I haven't got to know him yet, to brainstorm him and to watch him, but I did, he does have great qualifications, but this is one thing he's won himself over with me. He's got the same attitude to make Pennsylvania County number one, Pennsylvania County and the state of Virginia, and I like his vision, and that's what he's eating.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything?
No, sir.
There being no other bids before this board, I declare the meeting adjourned.